Everyone online, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Becky?
Okay, we're gonna get started, so. And Councilman Sears in the meeting at two o'clock. Okay, so we left off the reports. Dr. Jumping Eagle, do you want to give your report on the Aberdeen area health service, Pine Ridge Service Unit?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I'll back to last question. So I'm gonna go over, I'm gonna give an overview and then I know there's gonna be questions, so I'll go through this part quickly. Just an overview of our monthly summary of funds for August. You can see the amounts expended. There we go. So far, we've expended through August seventy-five percent of our budget. We're at the end, towards the end of our fiscal year. We'll, through the end of September, we'll show you the full amount expended for the, at the next month's report. The, all the team, the budget team, finance team, the whole service unit's been doing a great job of working to collect third-party collections and all of the clinics have been exceeding the goals for the year. For purchase and referred care, we've been spending on average almost three hundred thousand dollars a week for referrals and spending on priority ones and twos. And as stated before, we're, we'll be looking at, in October, looking at the, those deferred referrals as well and seeing which ones, if we have funds available at the end of the fiscal year, that we can bring back and pay for those. We have been receiving some appeals about deferrals and denials and reviewing those in a timely manner. Just wanted to give an update on the new COVID boosters and we do have the influenza vaccines available for all ages. PSAs went out to the community and to OST leadership and tribal council regarding the new COVID booster availability and the influenza vaccine. The new bivalent COVID boosters are recommended for everyone ages twelve years and older. By bivalent, that means that they cover the Omicron variants, but they've also added additional coverage for some of the variants that were most recently around the world that were avoiding, you know, coverage by the previous vaccines. So these vaccines cover more of the virus variants and offer more protection. The, for those who are ages six months and older, we still have the monovalent COVID vaccines available. For the influenza vaccine is recommended for everyone ages six months old and older, and those are recommended yearly. And when people are presenting for vaccine updates for COVID and flu, we're also reviewing all of their other recommended vaccines as well. Those are available at all of the clinics and also through the public health nursing immunization clinics. And at the COVID vaccination tent as well, at the Pine Ridge Hospital, the COVID vaccination tent is available Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, one to four P.M. We were getting questions about that as well. And then for COVID testing and treatment, COVID testing's available on walk-in basis or drive-up basis at all of the clinics during the regular clinic hours. For Pine Ridge Hospital outpatient clinic, that's Monday through Friday, eight A.M. to six forty-five P.M. And also Sunday, twelve to five. And the other clinics have their regular hours as posted and you can call their clinic numbers and do the drive-up testing. Right now, we don't have the COVID testing tent available at the hospital, even though we were getting questions about that. And we have the COVID antiviral oral medication treatments available. Those are available at all of the clinics as well. And then I just have an update on our COVID vaccinations. To date, we've given over thirty-eight thousand seven hundred vaccinations since we first started. And to date, up to second doses given are almost fifteen thousand. So estimated at fifty-eight percent fully vaccinated. That's based on our estimated service unit population of twenty-seven thousand. And for those service unit patients who are considered to be immunocompromised, that we've, they're fully vaccinated at eighty-five percent. So the team's done a really great job. We have all of the vaccines available and we have a pretty good inventory available right now. And I just gave you some overall numbers. For the Great Plains area, the COVID positivity rate for last seven-day rolling average is at zero percent, which is great. For the service unit, we're still seeing a little bit of COVID out there. Seven-day positivity was at eleven percent. So you can see it is coming down, but we do continue to see some cases. So encourage people to continue to follow the recommendations, hand hygiene, masks as recommended, social distancing. And at the service unit, we continue to always be prepared. If we do have surges, we're assisting with sit call over at corrections, continuing to participate in the OST recommendations. And just want to remind you that the service unit has been joint commission accredited as of June of two thousand twenty and has CMS deemed status as, through joint commission since June of two twenty. We're always ready for our full joint commission hospital survey and we're continuing to prepare for that. We do walkthroughs in our different departments, reviewing our policies, doing mock surveys. Recently, the lab had gone through a survey in April and their corrective action plan was accepted in June. And so they have joint commission accreditation for two years, which is a great success for the lab. The ambulance, Medicare certified since January, and so we're waiting for a CMS survey for the ambulance department. Just wanted to let you know about some of the things that we're doing at the service unit to promote customer service. At the Kyle Wellness Center, we reopen that in August, so the staff and the community are excited about that. We're continuing to promote recognition of staff and persons who are doing a great job providing customer service. And those nominations come from their fellow staff or supervisors. We recognize that we've been getting phone calls and complaints about our telephone process, phones going unanswered or taking a long time to get answered in several departments. So we reviewed our unanswered phone calls with several departments, outpatient, pharmacy, and gave feedback to the supervisors. So we have several projects, performance improvement projects to look at that. We're still working on a call center project where we're looking at employing people who would take care of the telephones and wouldn't be pulled away to perform other clinical duties. Right now, with the nursing shortage, we need MSAs and health techs to be assisting nursing staff who are really busy with clinical duties. So we're looking at using other staff who could perform the telephone and scheduling duties to assist the nursing department. We did post on Facebook and we have PSAs that we send out of our frequent, most frequently used numbers so people can just call directly to those phone numbers.
Okay, so I guess Councilman Rodriguez and then Councilman Carlo.
I was just wondering how that works with your, the job descriptions on some of these? Because if you have the cooks going up and serving the food and that's not part of their job description and let's say one of them catches COVID, now they're going down into the kitchen, then how is that supposed to stop an internal pandemic of sorts inside the building? I mean, I'm just curious about that because I know there's certain jobs you can't cross. You know, you know what I mean? You can't hybrid job somebody just to say, hey, we're store-handed, so you're gonna clean the bathrooms today. And that's not part of the job description. So I'm, I'm just wondering how that works exactly because you got them coming up and doing other things. I mean, I'd be worried about.
We're, we're talking about advertising positions that would be specifically for the call center. So they would be, they would be non-medical support assistant positions. So they'll, they'll be specifically for the telephones and scheduling. But then they wouldn't get pulled to do, for example, vital signs. So what's happening right now is if the clinic's really busy and if someone needs help getting vital signs or, you know, something else in the clinic, they get pulled away from the phones. And that's why the phones often go unanswered. And, and so what we're trying to do is designate staff who will just be specific for the phones and not get pulled away to other duties. So that they'll always be someone there to answer the phones. That's the goal. So we're getting those position descriptions ready to be advertised.
Right, thank you.
Yep. We're also changed our telephone option to make it easier because I know when calling, some of the options were confusing when people were calling the hospital. We're holding supervisors accountable that the expectations within their department is that we want to see the unanswered calls decrease in all departments and we're gonna be tracking that data. We've also implemented a specific customer service training and cultural relevancy training that's specific to the service unit as part of our orientation and annual training. That takes into account what are the challenges that our community members face in accessing care. You know, the fact that some of our community members have difficulty with a ride to their appointment. If they're a little bit late, we need to be flexible. What are the challenges in our community and culturally specific things that our providers and staff need to be aware of? Another training that we're working on is confirmation bias. And this is specifically, you know, training our staff to not make assumptions about people that when they present to care, you know, one of the complaints we sometimes get is that if people make assumptions about whether or not somebody could be, for example, quote-unquote, drug-seeking. That's just one example, but this is what the, an example of what confirmation bias training would address. Not quote-unquote labeling somebody. You know, when we work with our community and our patients, we want to see the whole person and address their needs. We don't want to be labeling people based on maybe what some of their issues are. We all have family members who may have, for example, substance abuse issues, but we need to, you know, take care of the whole person and not, and be able to see the whole human being. And so that's what this training is designed to bring up, some of those issues. We're also giving feedback to departments and supervisors about the number of grievances in their departments. And, and that ties into accountability. When we look at our performance evaluations, setting expectations that grievances and complaints is included in performance evaluations for all employees, supervisors, and providers. So that it is not acceptable that any employee would have over, you know, a certain number of complaints, staff complaints or patient complaints per year. And that telephone customer service is a part of that as well. If we know that employees aren't answering the phone or maybe could be rude on the phone, things like that, that that is, you know, and most of our employees obviously are not being that way. So we want to reward those who are providing good customer service and make note of those who need to improve.
All right, Councilwoman Carlo, I think you had your, then Councilman Steele.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Good afternoon.
I had the opportunity to read your report the other night when it came through. So I did go through it and, you know, this confirmation bias training, I, I'm glad to see, see that is gonna be implemented. You know, so many times our, our kids are labeled in the school system and, and I never liked that. And I, I think that's a good thing for IHS. You know, a lot of time, staff forget that people are sick and they don't feel good when they're there. So, you know, when people don't feel good, they tend to get cranky. And I think it's just something that, you know, they forget about, forget that, you know, that's why they're there. But I'm glad to see that. But I'm gonna go back to your labor pool. I see your labor, labor pool and I think that's a really great thing. I think it's a good thing that, you know, people are being cross-trained for certain tasks. But how do we assist the nursing staff with them being as short as they are? Because your labor pool individuals can only do certain tasks. They can't provide certain skilled tasks or procedures that the nurses do. So how do we get around that? That issue? I mean, I, I know there, you guys are critically short with nurses. And every day, I, I, I keep the staff up there in my prayers at night when I go to bed. I, I, I just don't want to see anything, a, a medical error happen or anything. And, and I know the staff that you have are compassionate, they're caring, the majority of them are our own people. And I, I just want to know, how, how can we support them or what is being done to support our staff that are there?
That's a great question. So we have a new director of nursing, she's been there since July and she's, we have weekly meetings that are occurring with the nursing leadership. And then also that she's having with the nurse leadership, but that also I'm having with the director of nursing and our area nurse consultant as well. And we're continuing to strategize how we can, you know, continue to recruit nurses on an ongoing basis and how to be competitive with the salaries. So what I've requested from every department is a retention plan from every supervisor. What I want to see is that it's integrated in their budgets, that they've designated a certain amount of money for retentions, awards for nurses in their department. And so that's gonna, you know, and, and that would gradually expand. But it's also gonna be based on our, you know, funds available as well. But that's also looking at the support staff. So we know that we need more health techs and MSAs to support nursing staff. So we have ongoing hiring efforts. Later on in my report, and you can look at that, we have some hires that we have that are pending for the inpatient department specifically and outpatient. The labor pool can assist, like you said, to a certain extent. But it's also a way that we can recruit people who may not have previously been aware of these positions. So they get exposed to different departments and then they figure out, hey, I, I, I might like to work in that department and then apply. They can get the on-the-job training and then apply for those positions. So that has been a really successful recruitment effort for the nursing department specifically. And we're expanding that. We've changed several more of our COVID positions to expand the labor pool because it's constantly turning over because those employees are applying to nursing departments. So that's been a big learning point for us. So as they're getting that training, they're able to apply for higher GS positions in the nursing department. We're also looking at, and, and a lot of these recommendations have come from the nurses themselves. Some of the things that we had to implement at the height of COVID around infection control procedures, we're looking at, you know, do, while we continue to comply with infection control, but looking at how other departments can assist nursing to give them more help. So we're looking at pharmacy, dietary, radiology physicians. How can we, for example, expedite discharges so that the discharges are crossing over to when the nurses are also getting admissions at the same time? Because that can be stressful. So we're asking all departments to look at how they can be more efficient so that can decrease the burden on nursing as well. And those aren't things that, you know, for example, a doctor might not necessarily think about, but we're bringing those things up with the team.
No, I'm just extremely happy to hear that after, what, two, maybe three years, that retention bonuses are going to be considered or possibly given out. You know, I think, in my opinion, should be considered for however many years this COVID issue has been going on. But at this point, I, I'm just glad to hear that that's a possibility. And I do have friends at work in other IHS facilities and I believe that some of those individuals, some of those individual IHS, IHS hospitals have already given out those retention bonuses. I don't know if their budget is different from ours or, or what the, what the deal is, but my understanding is they've already received retention bonuses. So, you know, here we are behind the eight ball again, so I'm glad to hear that that's moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and that is a good point. I mean, we have to realize that the service unit in two thousand eighteen was, the budget was in the red, was unable to bill for CMS for quite some time. And so we're just now to the point where we are able to do some of those things we weren't previously able to do due to funds.
Well, I think the, the issue was, you know, if, if I just can drop six million into the ambulance program and we couldn't get funding, then, you know, I think our, our staff is, our, our nursing staff, our medical staff, everybody up there that works and has worked through this pandemic deserve a retention bonus. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Steele.
Thank you. Good morning, or sorry, good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle. You know, I, I was listening to you talk a little bit about some of the training you may, you may be offering or might have already have when it comes to customer service. You know, during the evening, the, the, the first person you greet at the hospital should, you know, that, that plays a vital role with our patients. And, you know, I, I've been there a couple times in the past month here with my kids and my wife. And, you know, the, I think that training needs to happen for that individual that works. Those evening hours is pretty rude to, to people when you first walk in. Probably don't understand, a lot of people walk in and hurt, you know, sick, you know, going through a lot. And, and, you know, the first person you approach at the hospital is pretty, you know, strict, mean, angry, whatever. But I'm glad to hear that you're offering that training. And I'm not gonna say any names of no patients, but, you know, I know someone that went to, to get, to see your pain management person that you brought in, this contract worker. And you, you hit a little bit about it, about how they, they say people are, are, are pain, pain-seeking, you know, for these pills or whatever. But if a person has, you know, a broken back in two places and goes to IHS and gets treated pretty, pretty bad by this person who's supposed to be assisting them with their pain management, that's not good. And, and making all these accusations towards him that he's there for all the wrong reasons. I don't agree with that. And he, he told this patient that he called around and talked to other people in the, in the hospital and, and they all said this and that. And even accused the guy of having a disease that he don't, and that's wrong. So I really hope that you get these individuals the right training. And if these contractors are coming in with that attitude, then get some different ones. We don't need people coming in and treating our, our relatives like that. You know, they, this is all we have. We, we tried to put it out there to our people to, to get rid of IHS. I'm not a big fan of IHS, but for whatever reasons, our people voted to keep IHS. So we're pretty much stuck with these services. So I'm hoping that in the near future here that, you know, things get better for our people that, that are sickly, that are in pain, that do really need the help, but go there to our hospital, our own hospital and get treated like this. No, I, I really hope that it does turn around. And I don't know if you noticed, but OLR made big moves and, and they purchased a fixed wing now so that they can transport our tribal members off further distances. So I'm, I'm also hoping that that relationship got a lot better because that program does belong to the tribe, to the tribal members, the districts. And I know that they do a good job, you know, taking care of our people. So I'm hoping that relationship also improved with IHS. You know, these are just some things I wanted to mention and really don't need a response. Just wanted you to know that I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're getting training for your workers because I, I was really upset when my good brother told me that, you know, the treatment he received when he went to IHS. Like I said, our people don't deserve that when they're sick and hurting. They need to get helped, you know, not treated like we're some type of animal or something. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And I do have to say that, you know, our, our staff do a really good job. We have a chronic pain management committee where they do review the needs of those who have chronic pain management issues. And, and as, you know, the medical staff, we do have policies that we have to follow regarding controlled substances. And IHS itself has a chronic pain policy that is pretty stringent that we have to follow. And, and sometimes, you know, that's difficult for people to understand that there's certain things we can and cannot do where we have to follow.
I love this. Well, that's understandable if you're following a policy. But if you're making accusations towards someone, which in this case it did, and I'll share with you and, and, you know, rather in person, but that, that was pretty, pretty upsetting to hear what, what he told me. And I, I don't agree with that treatment that he received. I, I'll definitely share, share that conversation with you privately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, additional, Councilman Carlo.
You know, it's my understanding too, you know, that we have, you know, a lot of shortfall in some of our nursing staff. But, you know, I know we spend a lot of money on contract individuals. But, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, I watch television a lot, especially news anymore. But, you know, a lot of the different states, when the COVID was really at its highest peak, you know, there were nursing programs in some of those states where, you know, the hospitals implemented, you know, some type of a training program for those nursing students. And I was just wondering if, you know, that thought was ever, you know, looked into? Where, you know, some of our nursing students that are close to completing their classes and, you know, are on the verge of preparing for boards and whatnot. Would we be able to, you know, give some of those nursing students hands-on training and, you know, even helping them with some type of stipends?
I know that we have a, there is a position that's designed for nursing students. I think it's an externship program. And we do have an agreement with the OLC nursing program. So the director of nursing is looking at, you know, rejuvenating that. I think during COVID, some of that, you know, kind of slowed down. But we're looking at bringing that back onboard and reviving those connections with the nursing school.
Could you, could you follow up with some type of, you know, report? If, you know, I, I would like to, you know, really see some of the nursing students, you know, be able to, you know, get some type of a stipend or, I mean, we all know what it's like to go to college and be black broke. And, you know, a lot of our nursing students, you know, they do have families and some type of. and some type of income, you know, for them too, um, you know, would be greatly appreciated by them. So could you follow up and get back to us on that?
Yeah, I, I do know that the Indian Health Service has the IHS scholarship, um, that's available uh, for nursing students and health professions in general. And then there's also a loan repayment program as well. Um, and so does the Public Health Service. And so students would be eligible for those programs. And I can, um, send out more information on that. Yep.
Um, Councilwoman, uh, Sears.
Yeah, good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Good afternoon.
I just have, um, one question, one, uh, concern that, uh, we get calls a lot. Um, you know, from our, uh, people out in the, our community here when they do visit the ER. And that, when they see somebody sitting there in pain or, um, somebody that's, uh, like an elder that's really sick and they're just sitting in a wheelchair in a hallway or something. You know, I, I wanted to kind of wonder, you know, see how much bays do you guys have there where they're sitting out there and they can't be put in a room and be looked at right away, you know? So, you know, how many bay areas do you have in, um, the ER?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but there has to be, there's at least fifteen or sixteen. And then there's, you know, we have four hallway beds. Um, but we also require the staff, if they're, um, so busy that all the bays are full and they're having to use the hallway bed, then they have to call the nurse supervisor, um, to talk about a, a surge plan. If they're that, if they're that busy, then they're to be calling for additional help to come in.
Yeah, cause that, we get calls like that and, you know, in the late evening, late at night, people said they've been sitting there for about three, four hours and they seen somebody in pain, you know? And I'm sure, you know, I called you a couple of times on these and, you know, I shouldn't have to, but, um, we do get the calls. So that's something that I'd like to see, maybe that could be looked into. At least take them in a bay where they can be looked at right away. Cause some of them are sitting there like, looking like they're in pain. You know, are really sick. So that's just a concern I had from, uh, the public out here that call us.
Okay. I, I do know, one of the times you called me, um, in the middle of the night, they, um, they had a pretty significant trauma that they were, um, working on and transferring by air in the middle of the night. Um, but we'll review it with them because that might be a time they could call in for extra help to help with the other patients.
That would sure be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, additional questions? Uh, Councilwoman Carlo and Councilman Little Thunder.
I really, for real, just have this last question. Um, one of the things that was suggested to me and I thought it was a, a pretty good idea was, um, the State Board of Nursing, we, we have no native representation on that board. There isn't a native on that board, if from what I understand. Um, would it be possible for you, Dr. Jumping Eagle, to research this and see, um, you know, what it would take for, um, maybe our, our sister tribes to come on board and we try to, you know, get a individual on that, on that board? I think it would really be good. I don't know what their qualifications are, how, if we would have to, um, uh, make a selection, if, if they would be selected from the hospital or privately or, you know, that process, we would, would kind of need to know that how that process works. But if you could get some information and maybe bring that back, so I could bring that through the HHS committee as well. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Little Thunder and Councilwoman Woman, Little Hot Question.
Yeah, good afternoon to, uh, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Good afternoon.
They, uh, my district, Wembley, we have a Wembley clinic, so, uh, question is to see who the staff are and if it's adequate for them to, uh, to get a response to, uh, after hours. So, uh, that's the question I got. And also, we have a helicopter landing pad, so. And, and in order to transfer patients to, you know, like Rapid City to see a quicker response, to see, uh, all, transport the patients from there to Rapid City. So, uh, I'd like a report on that. So if you know, if you know anything or, uh, question here to see, uh, figure, that can be reported by you. Thank you.
Um, so just to clarify, so at Wembley Health Center, they're open until five thirty PM. Um, they have a physician and nurse practitioners there. Um, we also have a midwife position advertised there as well. Um, but after five thirty PM, there wouldn't be staff that are on. Um, they do have the helicopter pad there that if somebody presents and, um, needs a higher level of care than what, um, Wembley or Pine Ridge would be able to offer, then they could take them straight to Rapid. Um, if that answers the question.
Well, thank you, Edwin.
Thank you, reporter.
Okay.
Um, thank you. Uh, we got Councilwoman Little Hot West and then Councilman Rodriguez. Councilwoman, are you there? Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, skip Councilwoman for now. Uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
No, I'm here. I'm sorry, I had it on mute. Sorry about that. First of all, I just want to say good afternoon, uh, 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 Dr. Jumping Eagle. You know, uh, one of the concerns, I guess, that, uh, was addressed with me was, um, you know, when they, someone goes up to the hospital for an appointment, you know, sometimes the provider might be given the wrong file, the chart. And I had a district member that did go to, uh, the hospital a while back and he said he only went up for his COVID shot. But, uh, he was really treated, uh, um, like he had an alcohol problem. And the lady, uh, the provider looked at his, the chart and called him by, uh, some name, another name. And that wasn't him. And so he was kind of, uh, worried, but if that's kind of, you know, things that sometimes might happen. So I just wanted to address you with that. You know, I do know that, uh, when they do bring in the charts, you know, sometimes, um, you know, they might have the wrong chart. But, um, that did happen with him, he said, and he wasn't, uh, too happy about it. So I thought I'd just address you with that because sometimes I also know in an instance, I have, uh, uh, my youngest daughter has a, her first and last name is also a first and last name of another relative. And so I took her to the hospital, this is when she was younger, and they had the wrong chart. You know, they thought it was her and, uh, uh, it happened to be the other relative. So I was just going to kind of address you. I think sometimes that might be a mistake of the, uh, of, uh, the provider. So, um, I'm just sharing this, uh, maybe something that you might need to kind of, you know, just look at with the, I don't know if it's the medical records or who it might be.
Okay, thank you. That's a good reminder, I think, just for all of the staff in the world that, um, we're all staff from the front, um, when people check in all the way through the nursing front desk to the provider or to use two identifiers. That means the name and maybe either the medical record number or usually it's like the date of birth. Um, and so when you go places, they may ask you to read back your, um, name and your date of birth. So we'll remind all of the staff about that as well. Cause then if you're using two identifiers, um, you know, we know that, um, for example, my name, there are several Sarah Jumping Eagles, um, in the community. Um, so it's always good to use two identifiers. And, you know, we still need to wean, um, our whole hospital. And that's been several years coming. Most of, um, what we do is in the electronic health record. Um, so we just need to remind our, our staff to use the two identifiers. But thank you for pointing that out and I will send out a reminder to everyone.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And just wanted, just to, last comment was, I did go to the, uh, clinic last week, had an appointment. And I will say the provider there that I seen was very, uh, politeful. She's very respectful, professional. I just wanted to say that you do have some good providers there that do, uh, you know, really address you on your needs. I used to heard you say as a whole person, you know, I think that's kind of what she really talked with me about. So I really want to thank you, uh, I guess, you know, we do have some good providers there that will do that. So we might just, you know, have some of these little, uh, uh, things that might happen, uh, from time to time. But, you know, I think they can be corrected. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, and I think that is a, an important point that, um, part of our safety culture is if when we do identify errors, is how do we address them? And how do we share those corrections with all departments so that we don't have the same mistakes happening again in other departments and, and to recognize that we're all human. Um, and sometimes mistakes are made, but in the medical field, we have to take them very seriously um, and have corrective action plans.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I had a, um, someone call in or uh, tell me about an incident that happened, um, not too long ago. They took their grandson up to the hospital and, uh, to the ER. The doctor seen him, the doctors couldn't know what's going on with him. They weren't sure, but they wouldn't refer him out either. So the family, um, they couldn't figure out what's wrong with him at the hospital there, but they wouldn't refer him out for further, uh, follow-up or care. The family ended up having to take the kid, um, all the way to Rapid City. Or I shouldn't say kid, the person to Rapid City and to come and find out that he had a stroke. And, but they had to take him up and drive up himself instead of the doctor saying, hey, well, we're not sure what's going on. You know, this is a little out of my realm. Let's refer him out and, and see if we can get you, instead of him doing that. Oh, no, we, you know, this, that and everything else. So the family ended up having to rush him up to Rapid. And then in Rapid finding out that it, yeah, did have a stroke. So I don't know what's up with the ER staff on, on that part of it. I mean, I know that you're trying to cut down on the referrals because you guys don't pay the bill. So people don't like to get referred in the first place, but sometimes it's a necessity. So I don't know where, where that's at with that because he should have been referred out. If the doctor don't know, I mean, you know that as a doctor yourself, if you don't know, you send him to somebody who might, you know what I mean? Or, or you try to give him that extra level of help.
Well, and it's not that, I mean, if somebody needs an emergent, um, referral, then, um, if the staff thinks it's necessary, they're gonna put the referral in. But if somebody has a disagreement about, you know, what the provider's saying, they can always ask for, um, you know, another person in the ER, either another physician, or they can also ask for the administrator on call. If it's at night or on the weekend, they can ask, um, for the administrator on call or ask to talk to somebody higher up. Um, because we're, one of us is gonna be available by phone or to come in. In that instance, if it's during the day, then, um, either admin on call or there's also availability of the patient advocate. Um, and we just have a new patient advocate, um, or the hospital liaison is available as well. If it's Monday through Friday.
Okay, well, cause a lot of it is if you're taking somebody up there into the ER, it's, it's an emergency. You know, I mean, some people for no sleep, but, you know, you just, it's, they took him up there for the emergency signs of stroke. All that other good stuff. I'm all aware of it as, as being an EMT and, and you as a doctor, but that doctor didn't recognize.
So, so I think.
That doctor wouldn't refer him out. Wouldn't say, hey, this is, you know, basically it was an emergency to that doctor for a referral out. But it's, it's like, it's like being a cop. Every, every call I go to, it's important to someone and I have to treat it that way. And not blow them off just because I've been to that house a hundred times for the same thing. You know, I treat it like it's a new call every time because that's important to that person and on that day.
Right.
So that's what I can't figure out is why it wasn't referred or why they, now they have to take him to Rapid, do it themselves and now they're incurring that bill that, but they found out the source, they had to go to Rapid City to do all that, but it's just the fact that that happened in our ER with our own people and it shouldn't, you know?
But, but that's where I'd like to remind people that they can ask for, um, somebody else to come into that situation to help navigate that. Do they need, um, do we need to ask another provider to evaluate or, um, somebody? Or, or was it, um, maybe, uh, you know, maybe it wasn't a doctor, maybe it was another type of provider and we can get a doctor involved?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that's a lot of the information that people don't know that they can do that.
Right.
You walk in, you see one doctor, you know, you got one white coat, that's the one white coat you come to see. Next time you come in, it's that same white coat.
Yes.
And that's the way it is. When you go into the ER, there's one doctor, the one person that sees you.
Right.
I don't think people are aware of the fact that they can get that doctor's assessment checked.
Right. You can advocate for yourself, you can ask for the patient advocate, you can ask for the administrator on call, you can ask.
Yeah, cause that, that to me is just a simple fact that if, if that doctor's unsure to the point where this person actually was diagnosed with stroke and he was in your hands first, but you're like, no, 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 no. And the family, it was that bad for the family to take him to Rapid. You know, there, there had to be something there, you know what I mean? For a visual sign of something.
Sometimes things can evolve over time. There could be one symptom, but then later on over time it can change.
Well, this was all in the ER and they said, well, you know, what you can do, nothing. So they ran him to Rapid straight from the ER.
Right. And maybe offline, you could give me more information and I could review it.
Okay.
And then I could also check with contract health and make sure we're looking at that also.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Um, any more questions? Um, uh, you, you have, well, more on your report?
Um, yeah, I would like to mention a few of the challenges that are on the report. Um, I don't know how to take that right side off of on the screen, but, um, um, uh, you know, just some of the, the challenges that we run into. Obviously we've talked about, um, the, some of the vacancies. But also just the, um, the need to have competitive, more competitive wages. We're competing nationally with contract companies. Um, and with other private hospitals and organizations. Um, we also have, um, some of the challenges and we're planning a meeting with the OST Attorney General um, to look at the OST tribal hold process. Right now there's not a tribal hold process for weekends, holidays or, um, or at days when there's a tribal administrative leave. So that puts delays if we have, uh, patients who, uh, need a psychiatric, if they have a psychiatric emergency um, and it's a three-day weekend, then we will have challenges on how we can, uh, transfer a patient for a psychiatric emergency. Um, and they may be waiting in our ER for three to four days. Um, if we don't have a tribal emergency hold process. So, um, we're trying to set up a meeting about that to see if we can implement some other type of process. Um, that's one of the challenges. And then I know one of the other challenges we run into and this affects, uh, nursing especially. Um, is that the nursing home, and, and I don't know all the details. I know at one point there was a flood with the nursing home. And there's other challenges the nursing home is having. Um, but there seems to be a limited number of patients that the nursing home will take. And at times that overflows into the hospital, um, and affects our, uh, census. Um, and also is sometimes a challenge for our nursing staff as well. I think Mr. Carlo had a question.
Uh, Councilman.
You, you're talking about, you know, competitive wages. Um, my question is this. Is there such a thing as a overall or across-the-board salary that contract nurses get in IHS?
No. Um, we, when we, you know, you know, we put contracts out for bid, then, um, each contract is individual.
And the reason I ask that question is, it's my under- And the reason I ask that question is it's my understanding that is ours like forty dollars an hour or something like that?
No, that each department is specific to that department's specialty.
And I don't know if this is true, but my understanding is that, you know, up in Eagle Butte, their salaries are twice what ours are getting down here. And I can see that that would be a challenge in keeping staff too. But I don't know if that's true or not.
Referring to contracts or their, uh, federal salaries?
It was my understanding contract nurses.
I, I wouldn't know what their, what their contracts.
So what, what, can you tell us what ours are?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to check.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, that, I mean, that's is alarming if there is that high of a difference in retention of your, you know, professional staff. So, I mean, if you could look into that, I think that would be something that, you know, would be valuable to you and how you could address it.
Okay. And, and then just again, our, um, we continue to have HR classification bottlenecks. Um, we recently had one, you know, pretty high-level position. Um, and just to get the position classified, which means they review the position description, it took, you know, more than six weeks. For HR to review the PD and that's not, that's not even getting the position classified yet. So that's a significant, um, delay, um, and, uh, um, just to get positions advertised. Um, and it's very frustrating for the, for the team. I think the, and then just wanted to put a plug out there. If people are interested in labor pole positions, they can contact our administrative officer, Dewana Bisnet. And that's her email is dewanna.bisnet@ihsgov. And if they're interested in nursing positions, they can contact our director of nursing, erica dot or no at ihsgov. They could send their resumes, um, and we can do direct hires for some of the positions. If they're COVID positions, we can do direct hires. Or if they're emergency hires, it's pretty quick, um, to get them on board. If they're not direct hire positions, we can get those, uh, resumes and applications to HR.
Okay. Uh, uh, motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Little Thunder. Uh, further discussion, hearing or seeing none. Secretary, will you call the vote please? Motion to approve their IHS report.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior? Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
No.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Julian Spotted Bear? Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Wendell?
Do we have form?
Uh, uh, Councilman, we do. Uh, those, we have seven or twenty members, I think. Um, so that was, the last vote was fourteen yes, three no, and three not voting. Thank you, Council. Uh, thank you, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
You sure, you sure we just don't have the business council left in here?
So, it's the last of the dog man. That's, that's what I'm thinking. So. Um, so moving on, I think we have, uh, Chumps, uh, Jerelyn, Jerelyn, Alma? Jerelyn, are you there? Jerelyn LeBeau, are you there? Okay. Um, Jerelyn, oh, uh, Jerelyn, can you check if you're muted? Are you trying to speak? Or Brandon, um, can you let Jerelyn know that we're? Yeah, so while we're waiting for Jerelyn, uh, which one, uh, just make the motion. Okay, motion to table number twenty-four of the code of nursing home. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Little Thunder and Councilman Dillon. And the reason for the tabling is because she's not here, present? Okay. Um.
Chairman.
Which one are we, um, tabling?
Uh, nursing home report.
Chairman.
Okay. Oh, there's a couple of questions. Uh, go ahead, Councilman Steele.
This is Ryan.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle, sorry about that.
Chairman, who, who made the motion to table it?
Uh, Councilman, uh, Youngman.
I say, I say we deny her report, you know, I mean, she knew to be here. And she's not here, she gave us a paper report, but we wanted her in person. I would deny the report, but I mean, if the motion maker would consider that.
Okay. We have motion to deny. He's okay with that. So motion to deny report. Um, second, second, everybody's good with the second. So, uh, Councilman, are you good? Okay. Um, he's good with the second, uh, further discussion. Hearing none. Secretary, we called the vote to deny that report.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior? Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
You bet.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Richard Ironcloud? Richard Ironcloud?
No.
David Puer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Ha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Did you get mine, Stacy?
Yes. Is this Jackie or Sonia?
Yeah, there, there was both of us at the same time, so.
Okay. And you're both yes?
Yeah. Yes.
Ha.
Thank you. Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor passed a seventy yes, two no, and one not voting. Thank you.
Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Steele.
You know, so my question is, is, uh, so what happened? I mean, we, we, we definitely needed her in person because of the situation. And to, to disregard that and send a piece of paper, you know, that, that don't do no justice. And that's why I, I really wish the council would have shook that tree a little harder because, because of the situation, but this is what, this is what we get and, and we have to accept it. And I, I don't agree with that, Chairman.
This is Jerelyn. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. Oh, line, hold on, Jerelyn. Uh, we're gonna fix it. Yeah.
Hold on, we got an echo over here.
Okay, can you hear us? Okay, yeah, okay. Uh, Councilman, uh, so your comments are acknowledged. Um, Jerelyn, are you there? Jerelyn?
Chairman.
Uh, Councilman, who was it?
Yellowboy.
Okay, Councilman Yellowboy.
I, I just want to echo the same as Councilman Steele. I think, um, because of the situation. There should have been a more, um, a, a, a better way to, uh, communicate, especially with what was reported to us. So I too want to feel, uh, voice frustration on that or concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, um, so Council, I know that, uh, we're supposed to schedule a meeting the week of October, the week of the tenth. So, um, maybe we could move that, we got the nursing home report to there. The, that's okay? No, the, the nursing home. Want to do that? Yeah, if you want to. I mean, that's a possibility. I'm just don't think it's up there. Um, anything else on the nursing home? Okay. Um, so hearing nothing else on the nursing, nursing home, um, Jerelyn, are you, are you there? All right, Jerelyn, can't hear you. Uh, I saw, I saw your report come up, but. Yeah.
She has to be on this one.
Okay, um, Patty Eagle Bowl, if you don't mind muting your-
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Jerelyn. Okay, go ahead, Jerelyn, if you want to present your report and then-
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Jerelyn, can you hear us? Jerelyn?
You have to go video. It's on. You can even the video play. Now we can't hear them though.
Jerelyn, can you hear us?
We can hear you, it says. Okay, we, I can't hear you guys. Um, but I'll go ahead and give my report. I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulties. So we've got, um, I have my screen up with the report and I'm using Patty's laptop for, um, for sound. Do you have a volume, Patty? Maybe if we turn the volume on yours, turn ours down. Okay. One second. Appreciate your patience.
If you use one laptop to log on to Zoom, then you can share your screen.
It's all the way up. Okay, can you, so, um, you can hear me. Can, can someone say something so I can see if our volume on our end works?
Jerelyn.
Jerelyn.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um, all right, so I, um, have, uh, here with me today, Todd Warren, our intern. Geez, hold on. Oh my goodness. Okay. Um, interim, uh, Chief Health Administrator. I also have Ricky Shad here, our clinical director. Um, the timing worked out well because we're actually having an executive to team meeting today, so we're all in here together. Um, so I understand that, um, we, uh, the council would like the report that we- Okay. Um, would like the, um, report that we would typically give to Milwak. We didn't, we didn't have our, our usual Milwak meeting. Um, so since Todd is here, um, um, he usually, well, he usually gives us, uh, part of the presentation to Milwak, but some highlights for this last month in our report here today is for the month of August. Um, we'll give our September report after we reconcile, um, um, in October. But for our, some highlights for the month of October, we had, um, one point five million come in in third-party collections in August. Um, we are, we used our mobile clinic, um, at OHC Lacrosse Parking Lot for family practice. Um, it ended early that day because of a thunderstorm. And then again, um, we were at Atayapi Event Center at, um, at Atayapi Event at Rapid City Central High School on September seventh. Um, some of our priorities in August were vaccinations, um, for six months and over. We had appointments as well as walk-ins. We did this five days a week. Um, we still had our walk-in COVID testing available at OHC Southwest Entrance. And, um, in behavioral health, we are recruiting currently for psychiatrists as well as a psychologist. And, uh, we, we're going to be moving our behavioral health services over to the new clinic building when that becomes, um, ready. We are moving ahead quite well with our implementation of the NUKA model of care. Which includes weekly huddles with clinic team members and support staff representatives. We also, um, just completed, um, integrated care team trainings for, um, several of our providers last, um, in the week of September twelfth, which went really well. We had, um, a team that trained on a Monday, Tuesday, and a second team that trained on Wednesday, Thursday. And, uh, we're looking forward to, um, the report that we get back from South Central Foundation. They sent a team down to do the training and we, we've gotten a lot of good feedback from staff so far. Um, in clinical operations, um, you know, we do monthly, we have a, a system in place where we respond to relatives' concerns and issues. We always look at those opportu, as opportunities for improvement. We work collectively with community partners to meet the needs of our relatives. So some, you know, we, we do referrals and sometimes have to collaborate with other, um, outside providers. Um, we just added a registered dietitian and two lifestyle coaches to our SDPI program. And, um, again, um, the primary care clinic teams are also invited to the NUKA huddles that are held on Thursday morning. There's also separate huddles that are taking place with the PRC team and the pharmacy as well. Um, we are, uh, looking forward to welcoming two new providers, joining our team. Adam Dell, MD, will be joining Pediatrics. And Kelly Gunn will be, um, joining our outpatient department. Nursing, we have new staff, Amber Brown, Whitney Dahlstrom. Um, we have Savannah, how do you say her last name? Kolinsky?
Kolatsky.
Kolatsky. Um, wishlist for staffing was to provide Todd two consistent MSAs. I, I believe that's our podiatrist Todd, not Todd Warren. Um, three float, part-time nurses, two CNAs, a nurse educated educator dedicated to onboarding and, uh, annual training and mentoring. and annual training and mentoring of new graduate nurses. Our behavioral health team is very busy. They had 945 in-clinic appointments. 344 of those are no-shows, so we still have a challenge with no-shows. But we still have, as busy as they are, we still have a current waitlist for therapy and psychiatric services of over 200 of our relatives. As you guys know, we do satisfaction surveys across OHC and of our surveys with behavioral health services. All of the surveys indicated that they strongly agree that they're satisfied with the behavioral health services when they can get in. We still contract with Avera, they're now called E-Care Services. But as we move towards bringing on more staff, we're seeing that those numbers are starting to go down, the E-Care, which is what we want. We want to be able to provide as much in-person care as possible. We, can you tell a little bit about the improved telehealth and injection service procedures? Is that what our-
I think what they did is they worked out better procedures and less confusion for patients that needed those services.
Through telehealth, okay. We have a new patient registration staff person, Linda Green. And we're implementing staff trainings to include resiliency for our mental health workers. We know that working in our communities and in this realm can lead to burnout, secondary trauma sometimes, so we're really cognizant of making sure our behavioral health staff get the support that they need. Physical therapy, we our current staff includes one therapist and one licensed physical therapist assistant. And our age group that they see is anywhere from 11 years old up to 100. Optometry. Our current staff consists of three optometrists, one MSA, and one optician. In the month of August, we had 282 relative visits. And at the end of August, our average wait time for routine appointment was six days, so it's improving. It's less than it was historically. Dental, we're looking to hire three additional dental assistants. We have an MSA that was vacated in February of '22. This is our link for anyone that is interested in sharing with your friends and relatives about employment opportunities. We really encourage folks to take a look at our website. Lab, no new services we're adding to our testing profile in August. But we continue to work with McKesson to expand molecular testing. We're planning to procure a 16-module molecular analyzer. We currently work with a four-module analyzer. And we're working on a pilot project with the state of South Dakota Department of Health to validate a rapid antigen test for syphilis and HIV combination test. I think many of you have heard that our region in particular is getting hit pretty hard by syphilis. Pharmacy is also pretty busy. They filled over 19,000 prescriptions in August. They interviewed and selected a new pharmacy aide that will be coming on or has come on now. We continue to have multiple pharmacy technicians positions open that can be accessed on our website. On the end of August, we stopped using the, how do you say that? Monovalent COVID-19 booster vaccinations per FDA guidance. And we're expecting, if it hasn't already come in, the new vaccinations, it's here now. And then pediatric flu shots have arrived and we're when I was in last week, I think we were still waiting for the adult flu shots. But they're here now. Awesome. So both of those are available now. Radiology, in August, we saw 588 relatives and completed 736 total exams. Our department is currently staffed with one manager, one radiologist, one MSA, five technologists, and one sonographer. And then we have a technologist that's coming on September 26th. We do have a ultrasound technologist position that's currently posted and we don't have any new applicants so far. For quality assurance and accreditation, Misty Hunter started with us in mid-August. We're very excited to have her onboard. She will be providing our infection prevention, employee health, and nurse educator duties. And we're in the process of recruiting a customer service operator. We, as always, focusing on weekly investigation of any kind of safety events or patient complaints. Continue to work with departments to update and implement policies and procedures. And we're, there is an annual mandatory training that's been rolled out in the month of September. That's important for our accreditation. And the quality team is working with departments to improve GIPRA measures. We're increasing our impairment to primary care providers and to prepare for our QAPI evaluation. So SDPI, in August, our fitness center had 635 relatives who have utilized the center. That's the highest that we've had since assumption. Our team has provided exercise assessments, eye screenings, and diabetes management education visits. Totally 170. We are in the process, or I think it's completed now, we submitted our SDPI grant application thanks to our awesome grants management team. This will be on a five-year cycle. And we have two new lifestyle coaches that'll be starting or have started. So facilities, that's a very good picture, but it's, we're making a lot of progress. We had a phone call this morning with IHS on where we are in the process of we don't have a move-in date as of yet. We, it's really dependent, they're at the stage now where they're starting to do their pre-inspections. So they've had their first one. I just went in and did their first inspection. They have a bigger inspection coming up in October, which is an architectural inspection. So the process they explained is that IHS goes in and does their inspections. They, for a facility this size, they anticipate there's going to be items that are, that need to be further mitigated. And they go through this process over different areas of the new facility that need to be inspected. They anticipate completing what they call the mid-prefinal inspection in November. That's the biggest inspection that is prior to getting ready to turn the facility over. With the pre-final inspection, again, they anticipate there'll be items that are identified that need to be mitigated. And then they do a final inspection about a month later. But one of the things they shared with us is that they don't anticipate they're going to have staff available to finish those inspections in December because of the holidays. So they anticipate a mid-January final inspection. When that final inspection happens and if there's, and after all issues that might have been identified by the inspectors are corrected and mitigated, then they initiate what is called beneficial occupancy. And that is the point at which we are, that is the green light for our programs to begin the move into the new building. Yes.
Online reports, but are there any questions, Councilman Carlo?
Geraldine, it's Michael Carlo.
Yes.
You know, in your report, you state relatives. You know, I really don't think you understand the meaning of relatives. I was on the conference call with Ryan Jumpnagle, Chairman Frazier, Chairman Herman. And it's my understanding that yourself and Winnebago opposed a selection that was confirmed by the three tribes for the Aberdeen Area IHS Director. You know, is that true? When you guys are a 638 entity and we're IHS, I don't know how you guys can have so much authority in that selection.
I don't have any authority, Councilman. I don't have any authority.
Okay, if you don't have any authority, then are you supporting our selection or not? That's my question.
Okay, so the Health Board does not take a position because we recognize that tribes may have differing views. So we don't, we don't take a position. And if I don't have any authority on that process, I'm not a part of that process. So we don't take a position because we represent all 18 tribes. And, you know, we're a conduit for information, but we do not take a position one way or the other. The only position that we take is whoever is selected for that role, that we work collaboratively and advocate on behalf of all tribes for the area.
Well, it's my understanding that both you and Winnebago were on the call. You know, and if you guys have no interest in who the selection was, you guys were sure nosy to be on there.
We are invited by Indian Health Service so that we are kept apprised of the progress of the area director selection. Because we, not all of the tribal leaders are able to participate in those calls and we we provide information out to all of the tribes as to what the status is.
So if we were to ask you for your support in the selection that was made by the three tribes of a relative, what is your answer to that?
I don't have a position on who is selected for the area director.
You know, I'm ashamed right now that, you know, a tribal member who has worked his entire life in the IHS system is being denied, you know, the ability that he can become the director in Aberdeen Area. And it's no shortcomings by the three tribes because we are standing strong on our selection. So and like my hero Chairman Frazier said, you know, we are going to stand by our selection and if need be, whatever type of actions that the tribes need to take, we're going to do that.
Thank you, Councilman. Additional questions for Ms. Church or Oyate? Ms. Church, if you want to conclude your report, that'll be fine.
Sure. Human Resources. We we have a total of 334 employees, 263 are full-time, six part-time. We have 65 IPAs, MOAs. 227 of those are located at Oyate, 18 at La Crosse. Our American Indian hire rate is at 68%. And we currently have quite a few career opportunities available at this time. I won't read through them individually, but again, anyone that's interested, you're welcome to go to our website. So finance, Sunny is not here today, but I can go over this. If you have more detailed questions, she's not in the, not here today, but the report reflects here 11 months expense, keeping in mind there's always a 30-day net. The IPA and MOA salaries are included in the quarter one finalized costs that are prorated for January through August. We are incurring added labor and other expenses related to the assumption. Revenue is based on the, I think that's continuing resolution. An estimate of $2 million multi-year carryover of COVID funds. Third-party revenue has exceeded our earlier target through August. We are now at $14,396,203. And each of the budgets, each of the departments have their own budget, subsequent to the assumption. Rosebud shares were included in the beginning of February 26th. And so this is also included in your written report. Again, patient accounts in billing, we've exceeded our third-party collections. Coding, we added another coder to our Oyate staff and we still rely on peer group to assist us with coding. And our HIM staff ensure scanning, release of information, PRC documents are kept current to ensure no delays with direct patient care. So patient services overall, we have a user count now of 22,000, almost 23,000. Our uninsured rate dropped to 50%. We have, we have an increase in Medicare enrollments, Medicaid, we had an increase of 141 of our relatives. And VA medical, we have an increase of 30 relatives. For purchase and referred care, we had a total of 1,604 total referrals. We have two chef cases approved, and there's one more that submitted that we're, that's outstanding, outstanding that we're hoping to hear back from. Our vendor visits included Monument Health, Black Hills Surgical Hospital, ENT and Allergy, and acute care surgery of South Dakota. And then Monument, HB, really now uploading, we're uploading electronically for bill submission. And we have three new staff onboard. And that's, that's it.
Uh, thank you, Gerald. I, I believe Councilman Steele and Councilwoman Whitehorse have questions. Go ahead, Councilman Steele, then Councilwoman Whitehorse. Uh, Councilman Steele?
Sorry, I'll, I'll let someone else go in front of me right now.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Whitehorse.
Okay, thank you. Gerald, when I emailed you some questions, can you expand on your answers? You said you would research and give me answers back.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
The first one was, well, I guess you just said you had over a thousand referred, referrals. So how many of those thousand whatever did you pay for?
You haven't. For August, so there's, there's about a sixty-day turnaround, right? We, we refer, we usually get a bill in thirty days, then we look at, we submit those those to whatever insurance, if they have insurance.
As long as you what is the percentage? Say you refer out so many people a month, so what percentage do you have?
If they're, if they are PRC qualified, all of them are paid. One-twos and threes. In terms of priority one, two, and three, they're all paid if they're, if they're eligible.
They're not all paid, sorry.
If they're PRC eligible, if they're eligible for, for payment, they are paid.
Okay, so what, what makes them not eligible? Because apparently just being a an American doesn't make you eligible for services.
So anyone that is a member of a federally recognized tribe is eligible for services, direct care services at Oyate. If they live within the CHISTDA, which is Pennington County, that's one of the requirements for, for PRC. So if they live outside of Pennington County, then they are not eligible for our PRC payment. We do work with, like, we've had situations where you know, we've called other, either Shyne River or Pine Ridge, if we know that someone from that's out, you know, someone from the reservation comes and they need a referral, we will reach out to those other agencies, other service units to make them aware that there is a pending referral of one of their patients. The other thing we do is if someone is eligible for the marketplace or if they are eligible for our tribal sponsorship, we try to get people enrolled in Medicaid or the marketplace. We try to find ways, if they're not eligible for PRC, we don't just deny them, we try to find ways to get them covered.
Okay, one of, one of the questions I asked you was about a tribal member who, who's a member of Ogallala, who lives in Nevada, who came home and was staying in Box Elder, which is outside of Pennington County, but was denied her refills.
Yes.
And told to go back to Pine Ridge.
So so Cora, I had left a message for you, but I don't know if you received it or not, but in that situation, that person was not registered with our, with our organization, with the, with Oyate, we had no chart for her. And so there was, you know, if she had, had been seen by one of our providers, there would not have been an issue, but she was not in our system. And there's health and safety risks and filling prescriptions for someone who we don't have any way to see if there's any contraindications with other medications that they might be taking. Or if there's no access to health information, it's, it's not something that we do by policy.
Okay, so that would apply to anybody, because like if if I go to Winnebago, if I go to Winnebago and get seen there, they fill my prescription.
Yes, and if this person had come in to see our provider, they, they would have been, their prescription would have been filled. The person didn't come in to the provider, they went straight to pharmacy and there was no record.
Okay, now, the next one was a tribal member from OST who went in for an emergency issue to OHC emergency room and was referred to Monument.
Yes.
And then denied payment.
By Pine Ridge.
Went, no, by OHC. And Pine Ridge wasn't notified until I notified them. And whenever she asked why she was denied payment by OHC, she was told she had to take her enrollment. So she took her enrollment again. And the third time, I saw her take her enrollment in, and she was still denied because she didn't have, they said they didn't have her enrollment.
It was a residency. So I did research that as well. And the person does, is not within our CHISTDA. So we and there was a phone call that was made to Pine Ridge. In fact, they spoke directly to Ms. Jumping Eagle and PRC to let them know, because we thought it should be covered because it was an emergency situation. If that person had gone into the service unit in Pine Ridge, they would have been referred just as well and it would have been covered. So it's a policy at the Pine Ridge Service Unit. But that, that person, the PRC there at Pine Ridge refused to pay.
Okay, but OHC refused first because of what? And how does, how does that policy change? Is that made by the federal government or is that made by Great Plains or is that made by the hospital?
The residency requirement is a federal requirement of our contract.
So if you're from Pine Ridge, then you probably shouldn't go to OHC. So all the work and the plans that we had originally when we started working on OHC are just thrown by the wayside. Is that what I'm understa- that's what I'm understanding? Is that what you're saying?
Cover, no, we can't cover OHC, we can't cover PRC. We have a significant number of people that choose to come to Oyate from, from OST, from the reservation boundaries and they, and they get seen and they're happy with their service. But if they need to be referred and they do not live in the Pennington County residency, then what we do is we notify Pine Ridge to let them know we're going to make a referral. And Pine Ridge does have the ability, there is nothing in the regs to, that prohibits them from covering PRC.
Okay. Well, now I have another question. If, if there is a resident in Rapid City who is a tribal member and OHC is closed and their ER is closed and they go to Monument, will that, that get paid for? Or what other option do they have? Go to the nearest tribal hospital?
No, they, if they're, if they need to be seen for an urgent care issue and we're not open and they go to Monument, then Monument notifies us, they do it on a daily basis. We check with them on a daily basis and then those are referred over as a, as part of our purchase and referred care.
Okay, then I'll email you all of these bills that are being sent to people, that are being sent to me from your clinic, from purchase referred care, saying they're non-emergent. Because if I'm understanding you correctly, those emergencies should be paid for. I'm not a doctor, but you would think if someone has to go to the ER, then they should be paid for. Right?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, send them over.
Then we were trying to get numbers from IHS. And I sent a email, I can't even remember who I sent it to. But I sent a email regarding that information because IHS wouldn't give us the information because they had an agreement with the Epidemiology Center. And when I emailed OHC for that information, they referred me back to IHS. So do we not get any Ogallala information? Or how do we get it?
So I, if you could be a little bit more specific about your request, we have an issue, all of the tribes have an issue. It's a longstanding issue of getting information from IHS. It's an issue that Congress is aware of right now. But if you
HHS was trying to get the number, not even names or anything, just the number of how many dialysis patients we have on the reservation. HHS was trying to get that information. And we couldn't get it anywhere.
We, we don't even have access to that information, Cora.
Because when we emailed Sarah, she said that that information was shared with the Epidemiology Center.
That's not true. We don't have dialysis, we don't have that kind of information.
Can, can you send us that informa- can you send me a letter saying that so I can take it back to Sarah?
Yeah, Patty has some, some comments to this as well.
This, this is Patty Eagle Bull. I work hand-in-hand with the Tribal Epidemiology Center. And I know that a question came up to me just recently asking about a request that was made to find out what the diabetes information. And evidently, the request, this is, this is information that I just received. The, a request was made to Lisa Neal at IHS. And they asked if our Epidemiology Center would facilitate the secure transfer of the data to OST, but what they didn't have was who had requested it. And the normal channels that IHS will go through is the Tribal Health Director. So what our director, our Epidemiology Director is Tinka Duran. What she did is she worked that, it should have went to George or
It did, that's where it started from.
Yeah, so they sent it out, but because they have to have a secure, because it's HIPAA information, they had to have that secure line. So they did send the information out when Tinka got involved and she CC'd Sarah on that information, she told me. It kind of had to happen in a roundabout way though, because it didn't come directly to us, it went to IHS. And they asked us to intervene to make sure that the information was protected in the transfer. So she did do that. And on eight twenty-eight, she said that Dove sent it out, Dove Provost is our, one of our employees in the Epicenter, and she sent, he sent it out to Dolores.
And that was on eight twenty-eight?
Eight twenty-three.
That was over a month ago.
Yeah, August twenty-third is when Dove sent it out to Dolores, George.
And nothing was, nothing was given to us. We were told nothing came.
It, well, you may want to visit with George, but it was sent out. Dove is Ogallala too, and he, he followed up on it with the email and sent it out.
So that wasn't dialysis, it was diabetes?
Yeah. What I asked about was the diabetes request that you had asked me about.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the information that I got when I reached out to find out why.
It was I, I just texted George and she said she requested dialysis information and she got diabetes information.
Ah, so the question that I had was, they wanted to know why we didn't follow up or how, if we knew anything about the diabetes information. Nobody has asked us to get involved with any dialysis information, just diabetes.
So we have to go to, go start over with George again and make a request to you guys for dialysis information?
Yeah, I think the request went to IHS. Cora, I think it must have went to IHS and they just asked us to help out with it, but what I could do is reach out to Tinka and see if we can help you with the dialysis information. I, I don't know what they have, if they'll share it with us. We go through the same thing, but I'll, I'll see what we could do.
Okay. All right, thank you. If you could keep us informed on that, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
And Gerald and I, I think we need to come up with, I don't know, informational meetings or, or maybe put information out somewhere on the process and the policy. Because there's too many calls from people saying that OHC is not paying their PRC. They'll refer them out faster than heck, or their ER is closed, so they go to the Monument ER and then they don't get paid. The bill doesn't get paid. So we need to figure out a process to keep people informed or, or put the policy out there somehow.
We need to see who they are too, Cora, because not everybody may be eligible for PRC. So when I say that those that are eligible are, that we refer out, get paid at a hundred percent, that is accurate. But if there's, if there, if there's, you know, a breakdown in them not calling or if, if the information doesn't get back to us, if they So can you just say that?
Cora, hi, this is Ricky Shad. To our knowledge, we understand that all of the priority one, two, and threes are all being paid. So if you are aware of anybody who is not getting paid, we need to know about it. So that we can look at those individually and, and start addressing them and, and finding out what's going on. But it's
Are your priority one, two, and three the same as Pine Ridge's, IHS's?
Yep. Yep, all of our PRCs are the same, the priority levels.
Okay.
So Tinka has for you, Cora. So what specific dialysis information are you looking for or needing?
All we wanted was the numbers.
Okay.
Preferably broken down by district, but I don't even know if that's possible.
Probably not.
At least how many, how many dialysis patients we actually have on our reservation.
Okay. Okay. That should be easy enough. It seemed like Sarah would be able to pull that up from her RPMS really easily. That should be easy enough. It seemed like Sarah would be able to pull that up from her RPMS really easily.
Right, that's what I said. That's why I didn't think it should be this big of an issue.
It shouldn't.
Cora, this is Ricky Shad. Did you guys ever reach out to Black Hills Dialysis Systems? Because they actually they provide the oversight and they manage and operate the full dialysis units.
That might be the better route to go Black Hills Dialysis. Yeah, we'll help.
They're real they're they're very workable, because we've asked for some numbers for Cheyenne River before.
Okay. All right, we'll go that way.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Steele, are you ready? Going twice, okay. Uh Councilman Carlo.
Yes, I I just got a text from one of my members and it says. My daughter lives in Pennington County, broke her ankle and fibula on Sunday. Till Yate Health was told she would have to have surgery and they promised to call her on Monday. Monday came, no calls, she's in pain, can't walk. Called and left message on Tuesday, got a hold of somebody on Wednesday. They told her that PRC denied her referral. She isn't eligible for Medicare. But what recourse does this poor little girl have or? You know, for any type of services?
So again, that's I I I think it would be best if um. Do we have, who who do you want them to call? We need to know who it is, but that's I don't want you to say that. Over the, because we're bordering on HIPAA here, so. We need to know the information um uh who it is and so we can. So we can investigate and look into it and um. Follow up.
I can have the mother or grandmother call you. Cause they told her that, you know, Black Hills Ortho would probably have a referral and to date, there's no referral. I mean, this is life or death for a young child. I mean, you want her to lose her leg or ability to use her foot?
So here's the number you can call. It's three five five two six one six and ask for Nico.
I get that number again?
Three five five two six one six.
And who is the person?
Nico.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh any more questions for Geraldine? Uh Councilman Rodriguez?
As even as a six thirty eight contract tribe, there's still a treaty obligation to uphold. The health and. All that good stuff with people and to hear something like that uh isn't even cool. And then with the. The dialysis and and all the numbers and stuff, I mean. Since twenty twenty two, um I know we got a way to keep track of stuff nowadays, so. I mean, those should be readily available numbers. So, thank you.
Uh thank you, Councilman. Uh additional questions for Geraldine? Uh Councilman Little Thunder?
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we can uh. Get emailed also a hard copy of your report, that'll be fine. That's my request. Thank you.
Yes, we send it out to Stacy um. Every month, so I think you should have it.
Yeah, uh Stacy did confirm she got it and it is sent out to everybody on council. And and uh Councilman Little Thunder will get you a hard copy over here. The secretary's gonna get you a hard, I thank you. Um anyone else? Hearing or seeing none, uh is there a motion or? Emotions maybe made? Okay, uh well, thank you, Geraldine. Appreciate it. Uh thank you for the time. We'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Um so I think we got BIA, uh Miss Miss DuVille, are you there?
Yes, sir. Um greetings, President Killer, Vice President Musso, Secretary Tulans and Tribal Council. Um I just wanna start out by saying that oftentimes we get tied up in our day to day. And we don't express gratitude for each other, so I want to express that it is an honor to work with you. Uh before I touch on the Pine Ridge Agency super uh September two thousand twenty two highlights. I was asked by the Land Buyback Program to announce. Their land owner outreach event. Next week from ten AM to three PM. On Thursday, October sixth, two thousand twenty two, at the Best Western Ram Coda in Rapid City, South Dakota. Um the event will consist of beneficiary presentations and one-on-one assistance. They wanted me to inform you that. Not all tra- not all tracks will receive offers. Um to find out if your track qualified for an offer. You can call the Trust Beneficiary Call Center and that number is. One eight eight eight. Six seven eight. Six eight three six. So there were offers, uh purchase offers mailed out and. Monday, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two is the deadline to return them. Okay, regarding um probates in the state services. The Office of Hearings and Appeals has resumed Indian probate hearings. Uh they heard one in August and they had an additional six Indian probate probate cases heard in September. Beginning with the. The second week in September. Regarding social services um. In September, two thousand twenty two. Two hundred twenty eight. General assistance payments were approved and authorized. For a total of eighty eight thousand. Eight hundred and four dollars and GA distributed. Regarding OST Resolution Number twenty two, one twenty five, request to detail social workers. Um that was forwarded to the Regional Director. Pine Ridge Agency Supervisory Social Worker is working on working with the Regional Social. Worker and various individuals from the Central Office to develop a plan. To assist the tribe to promote safety of children. In the meantime. OST um Child Protection Services and. Indian Child Welfare Programs are receiving assistance from the Bureau of Indian Affairs Agency Offices. Um last week, um Supervisory Social Worker was here from the Crow Creek Agency. Regarding Safety of Downs. The Ogallala Dam, um the advertisement for bids. For the construction project is anticipated in mid-October, twenty twenty two. And construction is anticipated in May, twenty twenty three. Regarding the livestock trespass, uh we are working toward a resolution on the ongoing livestock trespass. Um due mainly to the ongoing vandalism to the gates and fencing materials. White Clay Dam. The Phase Two Engineering Proposal has been reviewed and made it through contracting. Um the contractor drilling began the subsurface explorations fieldwork in mid-September, twenty twenty two. Regarding Kyle Dam, routine maintenance continues to be performed on the Kyle Dam. Regarding Allen Dam, the design was awarded to RJ. And the kickoff meeting was held on September fourteenth. Twenty twenty two. And I believe they will work quickly to on the design and have a tentative schedule. For a site visit on October third, twenty twenty two. Um regarding Ogallala Sioux Tribe's request for funds to. Plan and prepare for litigation case preparation. Um the packet to apply for attorney fees and litigation support services was provided to the tribe. Uh regarding the Secretarial Election, um Resolutions OST dash two one. One nine five and one nine six to amend the Constitution. And the subsequent Tribal Ordinance twenty two fifty seven. Which um indicates the tribe's desire. To adopt the requirement of a polling sites in secretarial elections. On research, it I guess in November, two thousand fifteen. There was a revision to the twenty five CFR. Code of Federal Regulations, Parts eighty one and eighty two. On secretarial election procedures. And they mandate that all future elections be done by mail. Um only this Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs. Uh retains the power to waive or. Make exceptions to the Code of Federal Regulations. So on Tuesday. September ninth, a a letter was mailed to President Killer. Outlining the process to request a waiver. And the recommendation is for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. To pass a new resolution to rescind resolutions. Twenty one, one ninety five and one ninety six. Which requested the secretarial election and request a waiver. Regarding Natural Resources, um. Um back to June eighteenth, two thousand twenty two, uh the BIA provided um OST Land Committee the supporting documentation. For the ninety three, six thirty eight contracting of BIA Land Operations Program. On September ninth, two thousand twenty two. The tribe was granted an extension to December thirty first. Twenty twenty two to allow more time to prepare proposal documents. The BIA Natural Resources Officer and Self-Determination Specialists are standing by to assist the point of contact. The tribe's point of contact. Um that's kinda it in a nutshell. Oh, oh. Yeah, that's kinda it in a nutshell.
All right, uh thank you, uh Mr. Bill. Uh looks like I got a couple of hands up. Uh Councilwoman Sears?
Yes, um thank you, uh Mr. Bill. I kind of wanted to um. Talk about the constitutional, the um amendments. And you said that um we have to rescind that resolution. Because there's some CFR changes. Um can we get a copy of that sent to us? To the committee, because I know this is gonna have to go back to committee to review?
Yes, I can provide the um the Code of Federal Regulations, which was revised on Monday, May nineteenth, twenty fifteen. And it provides that all elections will be handled by mail-out ballot unless polling places are expressly required by amendment or adoption article of the tribe's governing. Document. That's um the the Code of Federal Regulations and they can send you that section of the regulations.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Councilwoman. Uh additional questions? Uh Councilwoman White Horse?
Just a clarification. On that, you know, the tribe does have an election ordinance. Right? And and in their election ordinance, it outlines the polling sites. So that doesn't matter? It doesn't count for anything? I mean, because it seems like the way the law reads is unless the tribe. Has specific law guiding it, right?
Well, I think I think they're referring to your constitution.
And our constitution says that we will create an election code to govern our elections. And so we have done that and the polling sites are listed.
Yeah, but then.
So that is tribal law. So it seems like we would be able to use our own tribal law to. Do the 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 constitutional revisions.
I agree, and what I would suggest, Cora, is um also in this section of the CFR. That I'm gonna be sending to all of the Tribal Council. Um it we do suggest there's a a part in here and I'll read it to you. The Department encourages amendments to governing documents to remove vestiges of more paternalistic approach towards tribes. Once the requirements for secretarial approval is removed through the eccle- or the. Removed through a secretarial election, secretarial approval of further amendments is not required. Meaning there will be no future secretarial elections conducted for the tribe. And future elections will be purely tribal elections governed and run by the tribe rather than the BIA. Additionally, without a requirement for secretarial approval. The Constitution will no longer be governed by other election-related requirements of the IRA. The Indian Reorganization Act, such as the minimum number of tribal voters to make an. An election elective or effective. Such matters will be governed by tribal policy decisions rather than the federal ones.
I understand that. I I know that that should probably be done. That would take another election, but right now. Right now with the revisions that we have. Um that we were trying to put on the ballot. I mean, anywhere else in the United States. When there's revisions to laws or anything. They do it during their election. And to me, it just doesn't make sense to require us. Through a document that was created by the federal government for us to fall into line under. Our Constitution. Where we have to make a law to govern our elections and then now. We're trying to change our Constitution and the government is saying, no. You have to have a law, but we do have a law. That's why I don't understand why they're making it so difficult. If they wanna get out of it, then they should get themselves out of it. But we have a law that governs our elections. So we should be allowed to use that law. I I it's probably pointless anyway, whatever.
Uh thank you, Councilwoman. Uh additional questions for Miss DuVille? Councilman Carlo?
Good afternoon, Mr. Bill.
Good afternoon.
Hey, um. Where are we at with um the IAS Social Service Worker Request?
Okay, that was the the resolution that I alluded to in my report. Um. I think a letter it was sent out to President Killer this week, and so he probably hasn't received it yet.
Uh Gina, and on that, is there any way you can just email stuff instead of mailing it?
Yeah, but I can I can start doing that because I received the email. Yeah, that would work better.
Yeah, that that'd be way better so I can get, because I usually forward all your stuff out, so go ahead, go ahead, sorry, Councilman. Um did you, okay, okay, good, okay, thanks. And uh Councilman Puer?
Good afternoon. Gina, have you heard anything back or? Are you authorized to sign off?
Or are you authorized to sign off? We passed the ordinance to pay. The contractor on the gravel. But it says subject to the approval of the Secretary of Interior. Is that? Has that been handed down to her, or what's the status of it?
I believe those monies have been already allocated to the tribe. Was it five hundred thousand dollars?
Well, the ordinance says that the subject to the signature of the Secretary of Interior. I don't know why in the heck we put that in there, but it's in there. Have you. Received authorization authorization to sign off on that?
No, I I think they use that term quite broadly, you know, from anyone from from me to the. You know, the Asia. But I do not have authority to sign off on that, on stuff like that.
Thank you.
Uh, additional questions? Uh, Councilman Dylan.
Karen, I do too.
Um, I've had, I've been in your office before with one individual who wanted to sell his land to another tribal member. And it got out of hand then. Uh, we never really got information, and then when in a land meeting. We were told that we don't need an appraisal, that it can be waived. And I let both of these individuals who's been trying to, one has been trying to sell land and one has been trying to buy land. That that process could be waived. And so I know the one guy went to Pine Ridge. I met him up there. He went in and submitted the paperwork. To Aberdeen, and that's been over thirty days ago, and still hasn't heard a response. Who do we need to talk about or to to get this done? Because I was told. In a meeting, and a number of these people sitting here could tell you. It's who you know on how to get things done in Aberdeen and in Pine Ridge, so. I need to know who to talk to to get this done for these individuals, because they've been waiting. To get their land issues resolved, so they can put houses in these whole, these lands there by. Maybe you can tell me who to talk to.
I I think, well, the one, the first issue, it started out as a. Land sale, and then it went to a gift deed, and I think that's why that one was denied. Because you can't, you can't exchange money with a gift deed.
He was gonna do that, and then he was told not to do it, so he didn't do it. And then at in a land meeting, we were told that. You can deny the appraisal process and settle on a price. Now, that that was after two years in the process, so. That kind of ticks people off when you bounce them around like that. Just come out and tell them the process and how to get it done, so they can get their homes in the place they want to be.
I agree.
So who do I talk to to see where this is at?
Actually, I've asked, I I already am working on the status of those two cases that you're referring to.
And are they moving? Are they setting someplace on somebody's desk?
We're working with the landowners.
Cool, because he called me the other day, the gentleman that I went into your office with. And he told me he hasn't heard anything from anybody. In fact, that was Monday that he talked to me.
Yeah, so but we're working with the land, yeah, right. Currently, we're working with the landowners.
Well, how come he told me you guys haven't contacted him then?
I think he, the one you're referring to is a buyer, right?
No, I'm talking to the owner that wants, the one that I came into your office with and we sat in your office. He's the one that wants to sell that land, ten acres to a tribal member.
Okay.
And he's not heard from anybody from Pine Ridge or Aberdeen.
Okay, I am I am aware of the two cases you're referring to. I will check on those. They should have been moving by now.
Um, Councilman, uh, thank you. Uh, so I got, uh, Councilman Rodriguez, and then I think Mason had a question as well.
That that it's not so much as as a question for Miss, well, kind of, I guess, but. I mean. That that we've talked about and we've discussed here today, it's, um. It seems like we're here for you, um, BIA. We're here to satisfy your needs. Um, we're here to satisfy all your regulations. We're here to satisfy everything about your office. When you're supposed to be here for us. And and I don't get get that and how that works, and it's been that way forever to the point to where it's normal. When it's not supposed to be, where we assume that, oh, we gotta jump through this hoop and that hoop before we can get it to you guys, before you guys will say yes to anything.
Well, and I agree, but I I feel the opposite. I feel that I'm here for you, and. You know, I don't know what you've dealt with in the past, but. You know, when I came on board, I told you that my experience is work is working for the tribes. I came from Alaska, and I worked for fifty-six tribes, so that's fifty-six tribal presidents and so on and so forth, so. We just have to, I mean, I guess. Maybe, you know, like at one time, I guess we talked about putting on little presentations on. On different process, um, different, um. Like, say, like the gift deed process or the land sale process. So we can still do stuff like that. I just, you know, it's like there's never time on the agenda for that.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mason?
Chairman, this is Garfield, actually not Mason. I'm just borrowing his computer here.
Okay.
Um, no, in reference to that, um, secretarial election, Chairman. You know, we were, we were told that there's nothing we can do about it regardless of our. Our, um, ordinance or resolution that it has to be an act of Congress to change that statute, so. Um, pretty much, we either fall in line with. Um, doing the secretarial election, um, by mail, or we, um. We, um. After we talk, Congress changes that that wording in that statute. Um, but I do know that we really need that that portion done in regards to, um. End in the land leases to twenty-five years, so I think that's. We might, we should, it's my recommendation that we rescind that resolution to have a. Um, poll ballot and just go along with the, um, mail election. That way we can, um. Get it done as soon as possible. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but, you know, I think, um, we should get that done ASAP.
All right, thank you, uh, Councilman. Uh, additional questions? Hearing, nothing else. Um, is there a motion to approve, uh, Councilman Carl? Motion to approve by Councilman Carlos or second? Second by Councilman Youngman? Uh, further discussion, hearing or seeing non-secretary call, please.
Blaine Middlethunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jempenico Senior? Gerald Canoyer Junior? Gerald Canoyer Junior? Austin Malkin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
No.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo? Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Dylan Spotted Bear? Richard Ironcloud? David Puer? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior? Renato Rodriguez Junior? Garfield Still?
My vote is no, and Tyler asked if you recorded his vote, no.
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Craig, Craig Dillon?
No.
John, I don't know. Anybody else?
Uh, Council, motion passes ten yes, five no, and five not voting. Thank you, Council. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bill. Uh, so moving on, I think we have a few more, one more item. It's a, it was a resolution or ordinance, sorry, ordinance that was passed out to everybody. Um, Councilman Carlo, did you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know. Um, after reviewing it, you know, I I still believe that there needs to be some strike throughs. On the last paragraph, it says, uh. Purchased by the homeowner. I think this needs to be striking through, and maybe this inserted. Under the supervision and oversight of home repair supervisors. Our day labor supervisors, all vouchers for material shall be prepared by home repair supervisors or day labor supervisors. That is not the way it works. It should say. You know, purchased by the homeowners. Material estimates for home repairs will be submitted to service manager for vouchering. And all payments for material shall be made directly to the vendors, not homeowners. I would ask that those changes be made, and. Do we need to read it for the record, or can I make a motion to approve?
Uh, it has to be.
Question.
Okay, hold on. Oh, 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 geez. So, um, so, yeah, could, uh, so, Councilman, you could read it for the record? And then, um, there'll be a motion to approve if it's a second. Okay, hold on. I'm explaining a process, please. Everybody's, everybody's almost done.
Question, question.
No. Question. Mayday, mayday.
Ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe amending COVID-nineteen home repairs. Ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen to allow homeowners homeowners to purchase materials. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote. On December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four. Twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, two, three, and under Article three of the Constitution. The Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, and whereas under Article four, sections. L, F, R, one, F, one, M, and one, W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the of the tribe. Protect and preserve the property of the tribe and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health. And general welfare of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and its membership. Whereas in response to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency, the federal government enacted the American Rescue Plan. Act published. By law, one, one, seven, dash, two, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, which established the coronavirus state and local. Physical recovery funds to be administered by the US Department of the Treasury. Whereas the tribe received payments from the coronavirus state physical recovery fund, and whereas on January twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-two, the tribe enacted ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen in response to the COVID-nineteen. Public health emergency and set aside. FRF funds for essential home repairs for tribal members with uninhabitable or substandard. Substandard housing conditions that present an increased risk of COVID-nineteen. Transmission or that interferes with the ability of household members to quarantine, shelter in place, or otherwise. Comply with COVID-nineteen related public health measures. And whereas under ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen was enacted in accordance with the ARP Act, US Treasury. Guidance and interim final rule for FRF expenditures, and. Whereas the Tribal Council during irregular session determined that amendment to ordinance number. Twenty-two dash fourteen was needed to help expedite the process of obtaining materials for home repairs, and. Whereas on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, the Tribal Council with the current president. Ordered to amend ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen by changing. The purchase of material by day labors to allow the homeowner homeowners to purchase materials, but leaving the rest of the provisions of ordinance number. Twenty-two dash fourteen in effect. Be it for further ordained that ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen is hereby amended to read as follows with amendments. Underlying bold and deletions with strikes throughs. That all home repairs shall be performed by day labors in the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Day Labor Program. Under the supervision and oversight of home repair supervisors by day labor supervisors. All materials shall be purchased by homeowners. And strike through all the way to. Where it says, and all this would be inserted. Material estimates for home repairs will be submitted to service manager for vouchers. And all payments for material shall be made directly to the vendors, not homeowners, and. Yet further ordained that the homeowner shall submit all receipts to the home repair supervisor. And the home repair work completed shall be inspected by the home repair supervisor. Our day labor supervisor for accountability of expenditures, and. Yet further ordained that this amendment shall be effective immediately, and that all remaining provisions of ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen. Shall remain in effect. Certification motion approved.
Yeah, motion approved, seconded. Okay, Councilwoman, a lot of question?
No, I'll let Garfield answer it.
Okay.
No, no, I don't. I was just gonna say that I wanted to make sure we had an ordinance amending that ordinance. So, but it does, right? That's what he's reading?
Uh, that's correct, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thank you for the, um, just making sure that everything's in order. Uh, Sears, go.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to know if, um, if there's an option where these homeowners can't. Go up there and purchase their own material. Or is it just that they have to be the ones? You know, we're dealing with a lot of elders that can't do that. So that's, um, kind of what I wanted to, uh, bring up. Options and help.
Presently, we are still assisting individuals that have no way of transporting those materials, but. It's my understanding if Mason wants to elaborate more on that, but right now that process is going on.
Okay, because with the ordinance that you're amending says that the homeowners got to do that, so that's why I'm asking.
We're giving them the ability to go and do the purchase without having to have anyone.
Uh, so it should say or. It should say or, because you're just saying the homeowner has to purchase. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there in case it creates a problem in the future here. in case it creates a problem in the future here.
What are your suggestions?
Okay, hold on. Councilwoman, so can you reference that, this for clarification?
Yeah, I, what I'm trying to say is, in that ordinance that's being amended, it says that the homeowner has to go purchase the material. And if we have elders that, that cannot go up and purchase these materials, there should be an or in there that the day labor or somebody can do it rather than putting it on the homeowner that cannot do it.
Okay, so and you're.
Makes sense?
Yeah, you're referring to the first, be it ordained, is that correct?
Chair. This is Rayanne.
Okay, go ahead.
So my, the way I'm understanding this is you want these, I can remove the strike through and put or the homeowner.
Yes, it should be an option because sometimes those homeowners don't have the ability to go do this.
President, can I comment on something?
Yeah. Go ahead, councilwoman.
Yeah, the reason why I think this ordinance was amended was our, our district, what's on me, is having that problem. Because we don't have, uh, I guess vehicles, I guess the day labor supervisors. I do know today that we have one day labor supervisor and the day labors working. But this came from our district, the facility manager had that concern. And she did address that with us as to why it was making it hard for the materials to get picked up and the checks were written, but we couldn't get the materials, so she was worried about the checks. Uh, you know, going over that, you know, number of days that's sitting there, not getting picked up, and then they were gonna have to void it. So that's the reason why this came to the floor. And I don't know if any other districts are, you know, having that same problem, but our district is. But I do agree with Councilwoman Sears, we do need to make an option by still utilizing the day labor, because if we get, you know, things working within our districts like ours, then it should be still open that they will pick up the material for the homeowners, especially if they're elderly, can't go after them. So I don't want it just to say the way we read it, and it won't, it's gonna just make it all the responsibility to follow the homeowner.
All right, thank you, councilwoman. So just for clarification, council, so Rayanne's proposing to remove the strike through in the first be it ordained, where it's the strike to the labor in the Ogallisoue travel program. So keeping that as is and adding the word or the homeowner, is that correct, councilman Carlo? Okay.
Just for clarification, I, I, the way I'm putting it in there is or by the homeowner at the homeowner's option.
Yes, because I did.
So that makes clear, yeah.
Yeah, because I did get calls from elders saying there's no way, I don't have gas money, I don't have, you know, a way to get up there and do this, so that was their concern, so that or option would help them.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Steele?
Yeah, Chairman, I think we just need to make sure that we get these houses, um, you know, inspected, because that wasn't happening in the beginning. And that's why there was a lot of issues surrounding this, you know, us giving the checks directly. Because those, a lot of those times, you know, people were selling their checks or they were, they were getting the materials and selling the materials and whatnot and you know, that's, that's what we wanted to prevent this going on. And this was to actually get people help fix windows and whatnot with our day labors, and now we're back to that thing issue again, so I hope, I hope we have in the summer that we have inspectors that gone, look at these homes.
Okay, Councilman Carlo did say it's in there, so. Additional questions? Councilman Puer?
Yes, I, I think in the, on the second page under that be it ordained, where it starts off with that, all homes, I think it should be an option of the homeowner to who they, they, they have an option to use the day labors or themselves, or if they got relatives that'll put it on for them. And, and as long as it comes back and then, because it, it goes on to say that there's an inspector that's gonna come anyway, so that person can use friends, relatives, or whoever to apply that material. Rather than the day labors, because now we're at, at a point where all this is coming right before winter, and we don't know if we're even gonna get it on or get it done before that time.
Thank you, councilman. So you're proposing that in that first be it ordained, in the parentheses, that all home repairs shall be performed by day labors in the Ogallisoue or, so it'd be at the end. Rayanne, do you get that?
Um, okay, I've. Let's see.
It would be the first be it ordained with a parentheses start, that very first sentence. And at the end, it would be or homeowners?
Um, okay. All materials. Before all materials, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be the day labors that that perform the work on the home. The homeowner has an option to use the day labors or family, brands, whatever to install.
Okay, I'm gonna strike shall. But may. And after day labor program. Um, so, if the family, if the relatives or whoever they get to do it, who, who would supervise that? Would it still be under the supervision of the home repair supervisors?
Well, they're gonna come back and inspect anyway, so they have to see that it's applied.
Okay.
Once we make those changes, can we reread it where, from where we start with the homeowner or?
Councilman Yellowboy, your question?
I think that during this process, I think we need to make sure that it needs to be clear that if this does pass, that those individuals who do have the ability to pick up their checks, that they are financially responsible for paying them taxes as well. Because I know at one point in time, out to the council meeting, out to Loneman, it was stated that they were. Or, or who is in charge of the taxes, so just a clarification that you are still in charge of paying your own taxes.
And you're referring to the state sales tax, councilman?
Well, they're gonna go pick up their, their supplies, so I'm assuming that's where. I know it was stated at, at the meeting there at Loneman, that apparently I said something or whatever, but just to make that clarification that those individuals who do pick up their checks are also financially responsible for paying their taxes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm getting a text from Steve Gunn, he wants to weigh in now, everyone. All right, Steve, I'm just kidding. Uh, no, Steve Gunn, so. Uh, okay. So, Rayanne, so can you read it as you wrote it and then?
Okay, so that all home repairs may be performed by day labors in the Ogallisoue Tribe Day Labor Program under the supervision and oversight of home repair supervisors or day labor supervisors or performed by others at the option of the homeowner. All materials shall be purchased by day labors in the Ogallisoue Tribe Day Labor Program or by the homeowner at the homeowner's option under the supervision and oversight of home repair supervisors or day labor supervisors. All vouchers for materials shall be prepared by home repair supervisors or day labor supervisors. And all payments for materials shall be made directly to the vendors, not homeowners.
Okay.
And you want to read the rest of it?
That's still wrong.
Uh, go ahead, councilman.
Where you get to the section where you put, where we inserted, you know, all materials shall, you know, be purchased by
Maybe.
homeowner or, we're striking out under the supervision and oversight of the home repairs supervisors or day labor supervisors. All vouchers for material shall be prepared by home repair supervisors or day labor supervisors. That does not happen today. The way that works is material estimates for home repairs will be submitted to service managers at the cap office for vouchers. And all payments for material shall be made directly to the vendors, not homeowners.
Okay, so, you lost me a little bit. Material estimates shall be submitted to the district service centers? What, what happens after that?
They, they are the person that does the voucher. It's not our day labor supervisors or any of those individuals. They're done by the service manager at the district.
And Rayanne, did you get that?
Yeah, I'm working on it. Okay, shall be prepared by the district service center manager? And all payments for material shall be made directly to the vendors, not homeowners.
Okay, so is everybody okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I just wanna thank Rayanne, you know, I mean, um, this has been a difficult time for all our districts on trying to provide, you know, the services to our members and, you know, um, hopefully, this is the last amendment that we're gonna do. And, you know, we're all gonna be happy, our members are gonna be satisfied. And, you know, we can continue this program. And the reason why we ask for these changes is winter's vastly approaching. And the amount of checks that are in there and some individuals are able to pick up their own, but by directing, you know, day labor supervisors to go with them to do this, to do that, you know, it just kind of bottlenecked this whole system, so that's the reason why I brought this back and I, and I thank the council for their support on this.
I have one more question on that last, or second to last be it further ordained, the receipts are to be submitted to the district service center manager, correct? Or did I get that wrong?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So everybody's good, the council? Okay. Online, council? There's a motion to go on an executive. We didn't do that, we didn't do that all day yet. Okay, so the motion is made.
Motion.
Okay. Motion, motion made by councilwoman, or councilman Carlo? The seconded by, uh, councilman, councilwoman Whitehorse? Uh, any discussion, hearing or seeing now, it's a carry call vote, please.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Oh.
Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes, for the last time.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn, there's a second. Uh, councilman?
Uh, with our OST continuum of care, they're requesting that everybody on council and everybody in this room, if you can come up with ten people's names and phone numbers that would benefit from this program and get them, get that list of names to me, so I can get it to them, that's what they requested through an email to me, so. Um, if we can do that, if you guys can get ten names together, if people you think would benefit this with diabetes, diabetic neuropathy, migraines, um, get their names and their numbers and email them to me, text them to me, however you wanna take a picture and send it, I don't care however you wanna do that. But get those to me, then I can get that to them and they can get, because they already got people out there going around getting names and, and collecting information and stuff to get the program up and, up and running, because it is up and running already. Uh, got a few hiccups going on right now that we need to get done. So if anything, get that, get that to me and I can get it to them, and that's even a bigger boost to, to the program and getting it moved forward. Thank you.
Uh, motion to go on an executive. Uh, so that last motion passed by a vote of fifteen yes, one no, and four not voting. Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, Councilwoman Whitehorse?
Um, I just wanted to share some information. I sent Stacy a link on a listening session with DOR tomorrow. If any council members could get on, that would be great. Just FYI. It was information shared with me from the staff today.
Thank you, councilwoman.
So stay here.
Yeah, I think I forwarded that one.
Okay, and she said she forwarded it, or she will forward it.
I think it did.
Okay, so the motion to adjourn by Councilman Youngman, seconded by Councilman Puer. There's not a motion for executive yet. Okay, go ahead, uh, councilman, or go ahead, secretary.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Cora Whitehorse?
Yes. Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Gerald Canoyer Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yeah.
Giancarlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Puer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos Senior? Mike? Bernardo Rodriguez Junior? Bernardo? Garfield Stills? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh, council, motion passes sixteen yes, one no, and three not voting, so we're adjourned at five-ten. Uh, thank you, council, thank you to the secretary's office, thank you to Jesse and Jedi, thank you to, um, Sergeant at Arms, thank you to, uh, Prairie One Casino, thank you to Key Radio, and thank you to KLC, appreciate everybody's participation today, uh, thank you, council, for the meeting. And again, the meeting's adjourned at five-oh-nine, thank you, and hope you will be safe, um.